Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody this evening. Mr. May, will you lead us with the pledge this evening, ma'am?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that all members are present this evening. I don't believe we have any delegations or public attendance, do we, Don?
We do not.
There's student discipline, academics, delegations, I think we're at policies. Do we have a motion to approve the policies as provided for the first reading?
Second.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
Did we write this, or this was a state written?
So, we use a company called Neola. And so they will provide it to us, and then they give us places that we can choose. And so we have chosen.
Just standard procedure, will you?
Yes.
All those, any other further discussion for that matter?
So that puts everything up to code.
Yes, and that's what I was gonna say. So the Neola writes those based on state law or state code.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carries. Personnel don't have a motion to approve as provided.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Adam, I would, I would move that we go into executive session to discuss item 1A.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carries. The time is now six zero two.
Those opposed now, motion carries. Approve minutes from previous board meeting. Board meeting would have been July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, so a motion for approval. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Finance. Do I have a motion to approve payroll payment of the bills of one million one hundred ninety thousand six hundred seventeen dollars?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Hey Mariah, how are we doing financially? We still looking good on our carryover and?
Yes, we're still looking, we're looking good.
Are any of our accounts, for instance, line item accounts, are we getting close? Are we spending too much money on our new facilities guy back here fixing stuff? Are we still doing, are we still doing okay? You know what I mean?
Yeah, well the fiscal year started over July first, so we got fresh, fresh new budgets.
So we're good?
Yeah.
And looking at having the carryover that the state's requiring?
Yeah.
Again, next June thirtieth?
Yep.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Reports and discussions, facility and construction, sir.
Okay, good evening everyone. So I have a list and Dr. Stewart, you distributed it to the board member, so this is a major projects list.
We've got to be emailed before, same list, right? The major projects list?
I think, sorry, ask the speaker in the mic.
It's attached to your.
Is that better?
Oh, yeah.
That's so they can hear you at home.
Right, is that better? Can you hear me now? Yep. Okay.
I only have one thing on the other's rule. Same list you sent.
I got one thing.
Oh, she didn't scan all of the, I'll send it to you. She didn't scan all of them.
The same thing you said previously, though.
With the email.
No, he, he has put a spreadsheet together. She only sent the one page instead of.
We only got one page first.
Ah, okay, well then we're at a little bit of disadvantage because I have ten pages. All right, so anyway, brought together a list of major projects, broken it down. This is, you know, first draft, I can polish this up and present it any way you wish. But this is covering some of the major items that we have. That's both capital improvement projects or levy projects that I'm currently working on. The first page, I just started off with Lewis County Heights School, and then in particular order, and then went to the middle school. So of, since you're a little bit of a disadvantage, of the hot topics that you'd like me to cover, you know, fire away. What do we have here that, there you go, sir.
Well, and it may stray a little bit from the, from your major project list, but, but I have a little bit of concern looking at the next week's weather, how hot it is. And, and, and curious how we stand with air conditioning, particularly at these elementary schools and places. I know it's a real problem, and, and if we have any other, if we have a contingency plan to try to, to try to help with that. Because it's, it's, this time of year, probably one of the biggest complaints that we, we all, we all get, those classrooms are hot.
Yes, those classrooms are hot. I'm also looking at touring a lot of the classrooms myself, okay? And making sure that the units existing on the wall are running. And if they are not running, then I'm putting that in the work order system that we have. And we have our techs up, one particular is more inclined to HVAC, and he's, you know, prioritizing getting those, those units, those wall units. It's, actually, it's, it's more often than not, they just haven't been ran for a while, they haven't been serviced in a while. So it's not anything detrimental. It's got to crack the case and, and clean them out, and then they run just fine, they blow, blow cold air. So on exterior walls, then, as you know, the sun beats down, there is going to be some, it's going to be uncomfortable, it's not going to be sixty-five degrees. Another help that has, when I walk the, the units, I'm with the principal or the assistant principal, and educating managing expectations on, on what we can do to help that. If there is additional fan, then a teacher can bring that in, if there's a wall unit or a window unit that we can add to it, then we'll go ahead and do so as well.
I appreciate that. I mean, I know how difficult it is, and, 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 you know, we start school right in the hottest days of, of summer now, so it makes it, it makes it difficult. And I know we're addressing some of this on your major project list for sure. But I worry about it in the, in the meantime.
Right, right. Some of the major projects, for example, I believe it's Jane Lu, they're getting a new HVAC system. Granted, it's not coming right away, but when the system is in, I guess, when it's being changed out from the old to the new, then anticipating that there may be damage to the, or increased humidity to the gym floor in particular, we don't want that to warp. So we already are having a backup system where we have temporary climate control right there in the gym, so that floor doesn't warp. So that's an example of what we're looking at.
Sounds like you're doing the best you can, and I appreciate that.
Anything else?
Sir, Jane Lu on, on your special projects, the roof, I know that, particularly over the gym. Have you had any time to really delve into that and see where we're at with that process? Where the, the gym floor has just been essentially ate to pieces?
Yes, the, the one spot in particular in the middle of the gym floor where there was a water leak, okay? That has damaged the gym floor, the wood, so we had the guys grab some sizing of that and repair that with like material such as oak, all right? And then they're putting a clear coats on it, actually today, tomorrow, putting a clear coats of varnish on that, so it kind of looks, you know, uniform. But that was a specific roof leak and damage to the center of the floor. So they already have loaded the roof, the new material on top of the roof, and they're going to be making sure that we don't get any more water intrusion. I all, I will also say that wasn't on the plan to do this, but the subcontractor who's doing the energy conservation, we talked about it, we looked at it, goodwill, they actually did switch out all of the lights in the gym area. And so it's much more presentable, lights aren't blinking, and they did that at no cost. For goodwill on us. And also the basketball, the basketball padding around the backstops, then we've, we're going ahead and replacing those, those should come in tomorrow. So that, that gym's going to look nice.
Great, thank you.
Also, at Jane Lu's school, I received a call from one of the neighbors that butts up against our property down there. As you're going on the hill, up to the playground, up there to the right, there's trees that I reckon is rotten, getting ready to fall. Some has fell down on other people's property. And in the past, we have cleaned that up and, you know, got them, you know. If you get a chance, I told him, you just come aboard and I'll get, give him your number if that's all right.
That, perfectly acceptable, yeah, no problem. And if there is something that, that we can do to be good neighbors, then yes, if that's not going to come through normally on the school system, probably come from, you know, people like you or constituents, they're going to just call in. Yes, that information needs to come to me, and we'll address it right away.
His name is Mr. Hurd.
I'm sorry.
I've got a number there.
Oh, okay, you can get that.
I don't have it with me.
Okay.
I've got it there at the house.
Yes, so Jane Lu and some of the trees on our property appear to be leaning or dead, and we get that cleaned up.
They're about to fall, so.
Sure.
It's, it's, it's a kind of a mess that.
Right.
Has been over the years, it's nothing that's happened, just, you know, during it, but one good storm would come through there.
Certainly.
And, and, and then I think there's a, a, Mrs. Bean, she also borders that right there, so. But other than that, and I, and I know you're just coming into this.
No, that's, I'm, I'm ready.
Do we, do we have an update on the water at Robert Dobbeland Water?
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, I did not have an opportunity to update that work order on a timely manner, that's my fault. I will be happy to say that the act, the work itself was completed a week ago Friday. So that was done, and then just Thursday or Friday, I went out to the job site, supervised the commissioning of it, and made sure that it was all complete. And so, again, that's my fault, I did not update the system appropriately within a timely manner, so, but it has been completed. It has been completed, yes, sir.
Did our, did our maintenance guys do that, or how was it?
No, our, our facilities guys, they, they received the work order, they did the work, and they did a great job.
So they fixed it?
They, they fixed it.
Where was the leak at?
It was underneath the concrete walkway, so whoever poured the concrete walkway did not stabilize the soil when they poured the concrete, and it crushed the line right there. So we had to excavate the concrete, find the leak, which was right there, fix the leak, report concrete, and spun the slab, commissioned the, the concession stand, and so it is completely up and running.
Okay, did, did that, did that also include the wrestling building down there?
I'm not aware of it. The wrestling bill, I don't know where the wrestling building is.
Wasn't there some problems in there? Kenny Lowler saying something about this. Some problems in the wrestling building.
I thought that Mr. Dumont addressed those last year.
Okay, I, I, I don't know, that's what I'm asking, I don't know.
Do I need to check it out?
New, new reports have not been received, at least to me.
Could you check the wrestling building?
If there's anything, yes, sir, that's why I'm here, that's why I'm here, so we got wrestling building?
Kenny, Kenny Lowler was, is over the junior wrestling down there.
I think our middle school team's been kind of.
Okay, are we talking about, is there, are there noted repairs? Is it just overall needs to be revamped, or just?
It was something to do with the water, that's all I remember.
You, you and I can chat later.
Yeah.
Sure.
Speaking of, I know a while back that I mentioned, I think prior to you being here, in fact. To get ahead of, of the situation this winter, the old wrestling building, which would be by the old softball field. Hooked my head in there and I saw there was, you know, some fitness equipment in there. If there would be a way to, you know, take the burden away from the junior wrestlers and the cheerleaders, if, if perhaps there was some things within that wrestling building, and assuming that old wrestling building is still fit. Maybe it's not a bad idea to, to get it tidied up to where it could be in use, but I have no idea about how the, the current state of that building is.
I want to mention one more, one more thing. And I know right now we got to get the, the football fields in shape, and I don't know if there's been any follow-up on those meetings or not. But, but one of the, one of the girls softball coaches down here at our, our field asked if we could consider getting a couple water lines in there so they can spray the field and stuff. And that field looks great, by the way, they just, they just don't have any, any water to put their sprinkling system in or what, whatnot, so. I forgot about that, sorry, I should have sent that in an email to somebody.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that what.
There's a, there's a, the high school and middle school both play softball down on this field, right, it's, there's a softball field down at the.
At Bland.
Yeah, right here at Bland.
Okay, all right.
And, and, and some of the coaches try, they try to take care of the field themselves, and they needed some water. Johnny knows better than I do, what do they need, Johnny, something to put their sprinklers out there so they can water the field?
Just a, just a water source, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, a water source out there.
Yeah, water.
Yeah.
Well, I think there's water in the concession stand, so I think it's just putting some outside.
They want hose.
For, for hoses, that, that's what we're talking about? Okay.
Because they're going to put some, I think, some fill, some infill dirt on it, as well as some turfis, and that stuff needs watered.
Okay, it, it looks really good, so we.
They are doing a nice job.
Yeah, they're doing a nice job.
Okay.
And that's coaches doing it themselves.
Okay, all right, anything else? All right.
Thank you very much.
Any questions, I'm available, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consider approved Plan One schedules maintenance agreement from Casto Technical Services for Roanoke Elementary School. Scroll chiller controls in the amount of two thousand sixteen dollars effective August one, twenty twenty five, do a motion for approval?
Sure.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Superintendent updates.
I'll keep mine very brief, we had a really good opening day today, I want to thank all of our staff for coming back, and it was great to see everybody together. Thanks to Mr. White for attending today, and we are looking forward to our students coming to our buildings on Thursday.
Mr. Holden?
I'd like to welcome everybody back, I hope we have a good year. I know we've got some challenges ahead, and I think we're getting the right people in place to, to meet a lot of them. And I want to wish everybody good luck and thank everybody for, for, for doing their job.
Mr. White?
Yeah, I attended the convocation day, it was great, I really enjoyed Gilbert Abbott's speech, the bus driver, I thought was real good, it, I mean, it was thoughtful and very pointful, too. And when you really listen to him, and you see him walking up there, you would never expect a speech like that, and it was great. Dr. Stewart quoted a couple things about twenty-four hours to forty-eight hours and returning calls and communicating with people, and I think that's our biggest problem here in the school system. Is communicating and following through, and if we can start the year off doing that better, I think we're off to a much better start. Two, personally, my opinion, this is way too early to start school. And we've heard today to quote, be the, be the yes or be the no, so we want to be the yes. So when we get a chance to go to that meetings with our other counties this year, let's be the yes. Because I can't help but think, we've got a little more, just as much power as Upshur County, I think they're under state control if I read things right. We've heard the same thing every year, a week back does not hurt anything, other counties are doing it. And I think for us to be a leader in that, but we got to have somebody at the table and attend, attend the meetings as we go forward, and I think we will this year. But I think that's a big thing, it's too early to start school. Again, my personal opinion, but I heard a lot of it today as I walked out of the building. So by learning that, great convocation, we employ a lot of people, we employ a lot of good people, and it's nice to see everybody in one place, people I've never met before. You get to see a face, that was nice about it, but thanks for everybody's back and hope you have a good year.
Mr. Bush?
Just like to, to thank all the school personnel who, coming back, those who are wanting to come here. It is a, an exciting time of the year, and I just want to personally thank them all, so.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes, sir, I, you know, basically, I'd like to reiterate what everybody else said. Welcome back to our employees, I think it's a, I think it's an exciting time, I think people are anxious and excited to get to work. And, and I hope it'll continue through the, through the several months of school, and, and, and know that, know that you can reach out to us if you have issues. And we'll reach out to, to the folks that, that hopefully can help you take care of them. I really appreciate the facilities update today, I feel a lot better about the direction we're going on, on some of that stuff, and we've got some great projects for you. And listen, doing the best we can to, to cool these schools so you can do your jobs, there's no question about it. So I, I just appreciate everybody being back.
Sorry about that. I echo everybody's sentiments and going off of what Mr. White said. I think to get it kind of ahead of the situation, we've had this, you know, conversation countless times, it needs to be from the top down and then the bottom up. I really feel like we have to establish a, a policy on being responsive. I have heard some, some issues over the past twenty-four hours where we haven't been responsive internally, and that's only going to magnify externally when we have parents calling in. I think we need to put that in a policy, and I think that there needs to be in a handbook, I think everybody, everybody from the top down needs to acknowledge they understand that. I'm, I'm only one saying that, that'll have to come from the body, but I, I feel as if that would be prudent of us to do. Outside of that, I don't have anything else. The date of our next meeting will be.
One second, can, can, can you look into a policy where we can put that in our policy manual? Dealing with responding to people who contact the board or administration or teachers or employees? Because nowadays with technology, you can tell when a person. Gets notified and whether they responded or not. I mean, they might say they do, but I think that's easy enough to verify. I appreciate that, okay.
Date of next meeting will be August twenty-fifth at six P M, do have a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.